Hi. Oh, Hillary, I'm obviously nice to meet you.
Hi.
Originally LeBlanc, but I live in Los Angeles. It's been six years.
Call me Nora.
Okay, Monahan.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
And Minnie.
Here. Is there any additions to the agenda? Make a motion to approve the agenda.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved minutes from previous meeting, regular meeting, 5:17.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from 5:17, 2016.
Second. Any special? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Special meeting, 5:24, 2016.
So moved. Second.
Any special? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Do there any hills on there? Do there any hills there?
No, that I, uh, no.
Old business, oath of office, Jeremy Minnie and Travis Keel. Who wants to go first?
I haven't told my kids. Hang on a second, okay. Here we go, Travis, call in the air.
Hills.
It's hedge.
Travis.
So, so who goes first then?
Jeremy.
Which hole would you like to defend?
I'm catching up.
Turn the moon bond.
Get the flag behind you.
Okay. It's right here.
Mark could be a little closer.
A little closer.
There we go. There we go.
That's you, Mark.
That's better.
Alright. Just read it through, really. "I, Jeremy Minnie, having been elected to the office of mayor, within and for said city of Hartford, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of South Dakota, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all the duties of my said office of mayor as provided by law."
Hold it, hold it, hold it. Okay, you want through your wife. No, get her in there!
I'm sorry, I'm interrupting the meeting.
If they actually look like they like each other.
"I, Travis Keel, having been elected to the office of councilperson Ward one, within and for said city of Hartford, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of South Dakota, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all the duties of my said office of councilperson Ward one as provided by law."
Can you switch back or not?
I just need a motion to approve.
So move. Second.
Oh, I don't catch that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Call me Nora.
Okay, there's Minnie.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
For traffic enforcement here. I know, I was just here not too long ago, so there was a couple out in between, but with the increased traffic around the park, obviously now that school's out, trying to keep an eye on the area. It's only 15 miles an hour down on I-102nd Street through the park area. So, trying to keep presence there and keep people slowed down for special attention here. We had burglary at the City Park, at the Anthony Theater. Both doors were, most likely, somebody threw their shoulder into and, you know, forced entry. Doesn't sound like anything was missing. Sounds like also down at the elevator, they had a couple of doors that were pretty much the same thing. Nothing was taken. Most likely more of a vandalism than burglary, but something to be aware about if anyone hears anything, any possible suspects or anything. Give us a call. Also, as you probably saw in the news, there was the chop shop. Sound Parker, down on Jeffrey Street, condition down there. Pretty much boiled down to stealing cars from Sioux Falls, parked them out, and saw them. So, another good example of the public helping law enforcement. Track down some of that stuff, because it sounds like that was a, started from a social media thing, and somebody said, "Hey, I think your car might be out here," and ended up giving us a little bit more information than we needed. They were able to actually get a search warrant, so the public help does help a lot with anything you can provide us with some of that information, so. Also, we got Jamboree Days coming up, obviously, here, pretty soon. The city requested, and it, you had two deputies for the car show and burnout contest, and also two for the street dance on Saturday night, so. And that's all I have for you guys, if there's any questions or comments.
I will comment that I spoke with Deputy Edwards. We, last meeting, we talked about doing a walkthrough, for like, better term, in the park around that 11, at 11 o'clock area. And he, he made all the confidence in the world that, um, that was being done. And, and he had addressed some individuals, and, and actually, at that point, said, "FYI, it's 11 o'clock, time to go home."
Right.
So, so I just want to let the council and the public know that, uh, that is being addressed. Thank you.
Awesome. He's one of the, Edwards is one of the main deputies, if you guys hadn't met him before. He's an older gentleman, he's probably maybe coming up on two years with the Sheriff's Office House. He worked out last year, right, Williams?
Yeah, he was also the one that wrote the report on my stolen truck.
Yeah, there you are.
That's why I knew.
Yeah.
Just got a general question. The construction going on around town, and I've noticed a lot of them just parking, like, on Western with no traffic control, no cones, no sign, flagging. Is that anything that's required by the city, or?
On Western, yeah. Usually if they've got traction equipment, they're supposed to be advanced. Or, and, or.
Well, I mean, a flash and light, is that sufficient? Or?
Depends on the city.
I mean, they're blocking the whole lane, so.
They should have, like, closed the head signs and, and.
Yeah. And, I guess I can see them black the whole lane. When I had seen them, they had the pickup with the light, and then they were kind of halfway on the, going down into the ditch when I saw it, but I didn't see them blacking the whole lane, otherwise I probably would have addressed that. If you see them blacking the whole lane, and no cones or any signage, like, which said, that would probably be, need to be addressed. Anything else? Alright. Thanks, happy night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is, uh, visitors, there can be visitors that want to be added this evening? Alright. So, number 705 hearing. Got a bunch of areas here. And, I just read through these as we go, and tree.
Yeah, just take one at a time. Do, have to represent each, for each, you know, hearing.
For each one.
Yep.
Okay.
Move on each one.
Alright, so the first one's the 705 meeting. 705 hearing for Jamboree Committee. Notice is hereby given that the Hartford City Council holds public hearing on June 2016 at 705 City Council Room. And 135 Main Avenue. Consider special events applications submitted by Hartford's Jamboree Committee for use of alcoholic beverages in public area in conjunction with events to be held during Hartford Jamboree Days 2016, since on June 16, 17, and 18, and 19, 2016. All interested parties may appear to hear, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the special, don't worry.
Second.
Alright, yeah, motion and second. Now that we've got some hyper discussion, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I think the attachments had all the information and details. Jamboree Day is, grown, but it may were changed at the venue. We've kind of approached the council in regards to that previously, that most of the events are going to be down in the park, including the car show. So, if you're familiar, you should get that question for us. If you did make an plan, then dot our i's and press our p's. Do you have a please?
They, they did ask for the, they did not pay the application fee, so they asked for that to be waived by the council. So, is that be part of the motion?
So moved.
Is one of them made a motion?
Make a second.
Hello, make a motion to waive the fee. What is that fee? Is that $25?
Did someone leave the second there? Yeah. Yeah, for 20, anytime you file for a special man application, it's $25, it needs to be published in a paper and covers publishing costs. So, we've done it in the past with the Jamborees, that is a nonprofit and affiliated with the city, but past councils have waived the application fee.
Just out of curiosity, so.
Yep.
Alright, and you second the amended motions, Scott?
I did.
Sid, before we go, um, we have to get some feedback from some of the neighbors about the burnout. I just want to make sure that you guys are all aboard any, give it a go this year, so. We've got things pretty much laid out, with a couple precautions and stuff like that.
That's moving to the City Park, correct?
Yep.
Is there anybody here that wants to address the burnout situation?
Okay, can you just give us a heads up as to the precautions you're taking, as far as they're at?
We've done the pat last year, is we got what they call like those Jersey barriers, those concrete barriers, we're going to put those up. We are going to put some cattle fences behind it with some screening on it, for any degree. We'll have yellow caution tape keeping the people out of that area. Everybody will be pretty much on the side, nobody behind, except for other participants in vehicles. Fire Department will be there. We'll have quite a few of the Fire Department members are going to actually help with keeping people back and everything else, so. And we will be blocking them this year if they can't hold it, and then using a little bit of water. And then also, we're going to do a timeframe instead of just letting it go over the last year's. There's no doubt, just a little bit, if the outdoors is here.
Where is it actually going to take place on?
It's, um, going to be in that East parking lot, and a new bathroom. We actually, um, the concrete that we put in there, Scott Norrner did it. Jamboree Committee paid him $600, it was what, $1,500 to $1,600 job, and he donated the other $1,200 in labor and expenses to do it. We've got it set up where it could actually be used for handicap parking through the rest of the year, so.
I notice it's already been tested.
There's a lot, two streets have been tested.
You guys are okay with the areas that we have requested blocked off for the event?
For Friday afternoon.
For we not, Saturday.
Do you have, I guess if I, if you did have it, I didn't notice it. Do you have a block off in there for Friday for the car show?
We, Minnie, mark the seconds. We're asking to go ahead and block that off too, for the cars and the car show, that way people are safe to walk in the streets and through the cars.
Okay.
Any questions?
Will, will the street dance actually be held?
For what?
Downtown, the street dance, actually. It's going to be downtown.
That'll be downtown, that'll be downtown. So that'll be set up just like it was last year with that thing and everything, same day as well, so. And we'll have our stands, as well, just like they did last year, just once.
Um, one more thing with the Jamboree. I know we have a license coming up next. One request that we kind of discussed as a group was Friday night beer sales. I mean, you guys can do what you want with them as far as that, but we thought it'd be nice to keep the beer sales for the organizations, nonprofit organizations in Hartford. And then, um, Saturday in the park, we've always let the pool be exclusive on that. That was some of the things that we discussed at our last meeting. And then, the, uh, Saturday, street dance will be down here, and that's, you know, we're okay with whoever there. And same way Sunday, I know the Fire Department's going to sell on Sunday at the tractor pole, but that's whoever wants to sell it, I've discussed.
So, I guess with that comment, Craig, where are you, where are you directing that at?
Well, we just wanted to let you guys know, because, um, there's, well, the GOAT applied for both Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and I don't know what their intentions are or what, I guess, but we just thought that, as a committee, we wanted to see Friday night for the organizations in town here. But I guess that's, but that's your choice when everybody decides, you know, if you want to let them sell, that's up to you guys.
As of this time, the Jamboree Committee hasn't been approached yet with a method for it, so that's why I'm just kind of asking here.
Sure. Sure. Okay. Any more discussion? Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we got our 710 hearing, and, let's jump over those people here. 28, 2016, at 710, City Council Room, 105 Main Avenue. Consider an application for a special malt beverage license for the Hartford area fire and rescue to sell malt beverages at First Street and Main Avenue from 4:00 PM on June 18th to 2:00 AM on June 19th, in conjunction with the 2016 Jamboree Day street dance event.
Make a motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 713 public hearing, special malt beverage license, Fire Department. Consider an application for a special malt, malt beverage license for Hartford area fire and rescue to sell malt beverages at the tractor pole area on City Land along Railroad Street on June 19th from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, in conjunction with the 2016 Jamboree Day tractor pole event.
Oh, it's counting 9:00 AM?
Hang on a minute, hold on a minute, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to make a motion to waive the application fee for the Fire Department on the last application.
Second.
Now, back to 9:00 AM. I didn't know the tractor pole was a great.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Didn't want to stop it, we.
Sorry. I didn't see, I didn't think I'm there to interrupt. No, that's a good catch.
Alright, 713 PM, Hartford binary fire and rescue from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM with the darkened pole down.
I'll make a motion to approve and waive the application fee.
The second.
You sure 9:00 AM's early enough? I did, I tried to report, I tried to really get started, doggy. I'll be closer to 11:00 or 12:00, we'll always get a break or, at least it'll only recover, so, somebody comes up north when we're set up, so.
Was that communion?
It might be. But someone's might just go from downtown right to there, so.
Fair enough, alright.
It's supposed to start at 1:00 or scheduled at 1:00?
I think that's what it is. Yeah, usually start getting things set up early schedule.
Alright, just in case if we show up early. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Not catching up on time yet. 715, special hearing. Special malt beverage license for the pool committee to sell malt beverages in the City Park on June 17th from 2:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and on June 18th from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, in conjunction with 2016 Jamboree Day events.
I'll make a motion to approve and waive the fee.
Second.
But, we're going to give that to the sports complex Friday night? The Friday night, when we're retracting, when?
Okay, so.
So it'd be just Saturday, and then, when we turn it in, nobody had to find it for you Friday night, but since then, you've worked with the sports complex, and they've gone ahead and done Friday night, so. They'll be doing sports complex, which is coming up next, will be Friday. So you could track Friday, so we, so Saturday in the park is even more.
Okay, I make a motion to amend.
Let's, um, let's let this, let's kill this motion that's on the table.
I say either kill it, or Mark's got that in his.
I'll, I'll amend the motion to strike June 17th from the application.
Okay.
Hold on a second.
Second. Alright, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Repose. 7. 718. Alright, 718, for a special malt beverage license for the Hartford area sports and art committee to sell malt beverages in the City Park on June 17th, 2016 from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM, in conjunction with 2016 Jamboree Day event.
Make a motion to approve?
Waive the fee.
And waive the fee, excuse me.
Second page.
Second.
Discussion?
Are only, does everybody sell beer for the same price, or do I need to shop around? I'm just curious.
It's collusion, probably. You're exercising.
Art? Yes, we are.
We've got the same price going on.
Alright. Alright. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright.
Did we get the swimming pool committees passed that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the last one is 720. Special hearing for special malt beverage license, retailers license for the GOAT to sell malt beverages at the City Park on June 17th from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and on June 18th from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and to sell malt beverages on city property for the tractor pole on June 19th from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, in conjunction with 2016 Jamboree Day events. So.
I'll make a motion to approve malt beverage license for the GOAT, not waiving the $25 fee, because they are in profit.
They already paid their fee, they didn't have.
They're repaid, okay, then. Let's, well, that's, they paid right there, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
This goes back to your comments.
Yes, this pertains to Craig's comments.
And so.
Can I do a second?
All second, so we have the discussion.
Saturday one, if the GOAT is applying for, we kept that as an exclusive in the park to one vendor. And many previous years back, it was always the American Legion, and one of the American Legion gave that up. So we closely stepped up, so we've always kept that to one committee. So for Saturday in the park, we'd ask that.
And you're saying that they have not approached you for a vendor permit this time either?
They have not approached.
So even if we approved that, even if we approved it, if they approached you for the vendor permit, you could deny that?
Yes.
You kidding?
You could deny that.
I'm sure they would do that. I just assumed they would do that.
We're not threatening.
That's the first.
I don't.
I don't think you can. I think the city overrules Jamboree Committee by law. If you approve the license, they've got the license.
They have to pay a police fee, though, right?
They can set up a table, Scott.
They can set up, yeah, the table, and any part of the park they want.
They can go wherever they want. We're asking to not allow that, since we've done it exclusive.
Yeah, I think if you're not going to allow, you should not allow here.
I, I'm curious. Why, why don't they want to do the street dance?
I think there's, is, but they're done at 11:00.
At 11:00, yeah. I think they filled this out at the last.
But it says City Park and Railroad, it doesn't say anything about Main Street.
Yeah.
How about the Saturday?
I think they filled it out at the last minute. Through, and they just met the deadline, and I think they, they came in as, what days is the event going on? We want Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and I think they just filled in some times.
The, the way this application reads, if this is approved, 17, 18, and 19, they can sell beer from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM in the City Park and on Railroad Street.
Yep.
I mean, whether there's a tractor pole going or not, they can sell beer on Railroad Street.
On the 18th, though, the way it's written, they can sell any city property.
Well, the City Park or Railroad Street, if you approve it the way it's written, between 11:00 and 11:00.
That is the actual application call, that application.
Can we amend that? I mean, can we amend this?
Hang on, it's from where I'm ready to go.
You, you can amend it, you can rule what parts you want, the parts you don't.
Yeah.
I mean, they're not here to say that maybe they don't want to do the street dance. I mean, I don't know what their intentions are, I know what they're looking at.
They can't sell, and, and shut it down at 11:00 o'clock. What day they turn this entry, so.
Well, the 19th of May.
As long, and this isn't a new thing, I mean, as long as I've been involved with Jamboree Committee, it's been, trying to keep that piece of it for nonprofit parks. And, always, I don't even know that, you know, the committee would probably realize it until maybe late last year, that, hey, wait a minute, if somebody comes and applies for one, the council approves it, they can still get it. It's just going against what Jamboree Committee has tried to set up and what they've tried to do. And in, in all seriousness, it takes away from the other committees who are volunteering people and trying to raise money for city projects or so.
The only one I'd be in favor of is the only one that didn't apply for.
I've got a general question. With their liquor license, or any business with the retail license, they can only serve in the building or on the property, is that how?
Not if you approve the special.
No, I mean in general.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The South Park, yeah.
But, like, the South Park doesn't get a permit for the street.
Yeah, South Park, they stay on their property where their license is tied to the vehicles, yeah.
And so the, so their license restricts them to the.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to come out in the middle of the street for the dollar.
They can sell whatever description they put on the property. So if they put the building and they didn't include the parking lot, they can't sell it on the parking lot. So it has to be very specific with the legal description.
And, and they put the parcel that they're on, so, yeah.
And the street dance is the fundraiser for the fire department.
Okay.
That's, that's, you guys sell the beer that night?
Yeah, we do, and then the South part does.
Well, and the Legion Institute too.
Yeah, we do, the Institute.
Saturday night sales were sad to me. I mean, you guys did this part, but Friday night I did good. But like Saturday, you didn't apply for the street dance, and that's the one where there'd be.
Big opportunity.
Alright, I will amend my motion to approve the goat for, the application as written, okay? Due to conflicts in verbiage. Do you disagree with that, Teresa?
Do you want to add your motion?
I make a motion to amend my motion. I make a motion to amend my motion, okay? In. In lieu of, of conflicts with the verbiage on the application.
Okay, that's better, you put. You said it to approve.
I did?
You did, I. That was why I questioned you.
And the approval is what I wanted to say, okay. Sorry about that. Sorry, man.
That's right, I was.
So what is the motion?
Yeah.
Sorry, I opened my mouth in the first place.
So now just history track.
Tell us the spirit of what you wanted to be, history track.
Tell us the spirit of what you wanted to be.
You could, you could basically vote on the first motion and vote it down.
Vote it down, sir.
Or, or since it's not been seconded, the mayor could pause and say there's not a second, the motion fails.
There was a second.
It was seconded by.
It was seconded.
It was seconded.
So I would like to make sure that, since I opened my mouth, that I'm the one that opened my mouth again, amend my motion after further review, et cetera, et cetera. What I said. Amend, I would like to amend my motion to approve the applica, the malt beverage license application for the goat due to a discrepancy in verbiage of said application.
Yeah, it's pretty cool, that's. It's concise, you can still approve again.
That's lawyer language for God's sake.
How about, how about?
No, it's not.
How about we, how about we vote on the original motion?
Kill it.
Kill it.
I think you know what you're gonna do, right?
Alright, well, we're gonna vote again. It's what I have.
Just for, just for possibility, why doesn't the original motion, approve it?
Yeah.
Alright, we're gonna vote on the original motion, we're gonna go down, down here. Mark.
The original motion was to approve.
Was to approve.
No.
Mark.
No.
Travis?
No.
Ryan?
No.
No, on the contingency. Alright, no. Help me out, help get the public, okay?
That's clear, alright.
I make a motion to deny the malt beverage license request by the goat.
I don't think that's needed basically.
We failed it.
We failed it, yeah, it's done.
Move on, just wanna make sure.
Done, done, yeah.
That was supposed to take two minutes.
Alright, so we could approve, I'm sure. Second reading of ordinance number six twenty-nine, remember the rural service district exhibit A. So, do you have anything you wanna add on this, fell, Teresa?
No, basically, this is, we have first reading at the last meeting and Travis, you were present in the audience, that means you kinda know what it's about and you read the packet, but they were something, you have some land or the town they want to put in rural service district. We have first reading at the last meeting, it approved, since it's an ordinance, we need two readings, so it would have to be a full four second reading to for it to move on.
No changes have been made to it.
Make a motion to approve second reading.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Policy, two thousand sixteen dash two, the correspondence policy. So, Igo, it looks like you wrote this up at the, no?
No, I drafted, she's gotta sign it, she's.
Gotcha, okay. After the last meeting when this was discussed, so.
Yeah, under the council direction, you wanted a policy written up for the council to review, addressing correspondence at the city, or basically that the council or mayor receives from a citizen. Basically, the policy just kind of broke, broke down into two phases. One of them is any unsigned correspondence, and it says any unsigned correspondence will not be acknowledged. Not out in public, not in a meeting at all, we just won't acknowledge it. Uh, if you receive signed correspondence, and, and just so all the council gets a chance to see what's coming before and what is proposing to be read in an open meeting, if any signed correspondence come in, um, it'll have to be, proposing it has to be agenda size, it'll have to come in to me, so you get a letter, Jeremy, you give it to me, or Mars, or you know. Um, so I can put it on the agenda, it can be an agenda item under correspondence. I can put a copy of that in the council packet, so everybody can read it and, you know, see what it's pertaining to. And then, um, once it's on the agenda, it'll come to the city council. First part of the meeting, you approve the agenda, if everybody's okay with that being read, approve the agenda as is. If you're not, then you approve the agenda with that item taken off. So then it's not read at all or addressed in an open meeting. So that's basically what I'm proposing of correspondence.
Make a motion to approve policy two thousand sixteen dash two.
Make a second. Questions, discussion?
Thanks, great policy. It's the elephant in the room, I guess, uh, in the last year that we've had, but, um, looking back on things, even just in the last, I guess this is the third meeting that this council has done, but we've even dealt with this just in two meetings that this council put up down, so. I would, I'd like this just because, um, we're not gonna be embarrassed by correspondence that is brought up. We're all gonna know what's, what's out there, we're all gonna have a say on whether or not it's brought up or not.
I would like to make the point that even though, um, an unsigned correspondence is received, it's still shared with the board, with the council. It doesn't just stay with that person, Teresa, we still get to see it. So at some point in the future, we're not hit with something out of our eye field. You know, so while we, we don't have to guard it as a body, we individually still are aware of it.
I think that'd be a gentleman, Travis.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's basically what I'm stating.
Probably I can just, yeah, do that as a staff, you know, which you know.
I don't know how. I'm not saying this verbiage needs to be changed. No, I, I just don't, I don't even know how you, I don't even know how you write that in.
No.
I think, I think it basically says that it's unofficial basis, you know.
It's a common sense thing, but still, it's not really stuff that's not sound.
Yeah.
And we had that situation the last meeting, we received some, and notified everyone, so we'll just continue that practice.
Alright, any more discussion? Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, how's the new business? Testing Chamber and Economic Development Director's position. So, since last meeting, for last public council meeting, we had an executive session where we interviewed candidates for a county council position. And we've got somebody who's accepted the position. What else should I say, Teresa?
Yep, they know they need to do, we just basically at this point, like you said, um, we interview candidates, the council director needs to make an offer out there, that offer has been accepted. So at this point, you need to take formal action to make a motion to hire.
I will make a motion to hire Jesse Honkert at twenty dollars per hour, with all benefits for the employee manual to begin upon this start date, July second, two thousand sixteen. And I will also authorize the city administrator to pick which office he gets.
What, what did you say, Mark?
July sixth.
Can I ask you to amend your motion and take out the office part?
You want that taken out? What if, what if Travis puts him in the room closet? Or not Travis, but Jeremy? Strike the office part.
Is that okay with the council, I'll just do that?
Alright. Do we have a second?
Second.
Alright. Mark?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes. Did he say that he was gonna have a chance to make it here for Jamboree Day?
I was gonna say that in my report, uh, not. Kinda moved to a little more difficult. I did.
Would you do?
Legal, legal counsel, legal counsel said with the office, with Teresa in the office, that that motion was getting a little strung out a little, little much. So he said, uh, it's my prerogative to, uh, I'm gonna, you know, just 'cause I wanna do it. I'm gonna make a motion to the city administrator, put, uh, put the new economic development director in wherever office she feels fit.
Second? You got a second, right? You got a second? Scott?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Mark? Okay.
Never saw that one.
Okay. Appointment to councilperson, Ward three. So we've been opening in Ward three. We've had some candidates put their names in the hat and say they would like to fill that position. That position runs through April of two thousand seventeen. And, um, at this point, I will be looking for, I would recommend for this position, Mr. Arden Jones, for Ward three, to fill out the remaining piece of that position. And I'm looking for that motion from the floor. A second to approve it.
So.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? He already said he'd take it, so.
Yep.
We know that by our hands.
That's why they're all looking at me. They just happen to be sitting next to me. They're wondering where to gather.
Although he did say he has a twenty-one handicap, so I'm not so sure I trust him yet.
Mark's playing with me, he goes.
Alright. And now we got appointment to planning and zoning board. We have three candidates for the planning and zoning board also put their name in the hat and, uh, want to be noticed and, and has to be on the planning and zoning board. So, I know many of you reached out, we've talked to a lot of different candidates, we've kinda looked at that a little bit, and at this time, I would like to appoint Andrea Finch to planning and zoning.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would like to thank all those who've kept up for planning and zoning, Tony. Um, and I'll just speak very publicly by saying, uh, in the fact that I applaud, um, all the candidates for their, their, their community activity. And, uh, the, the determining factor for me was that Andrea, you know, willing to run for city council, uh, at that, at that time, um, I commend her for that also. And so, um, even though Tony and Stephanie, was there any others that came in after the fact that I don't know about?
All I know is what I sent out to you guys.
Okay. Um, our, our key, key personnel to, to, the volunteer group apart from, um, I just wanted to make it public that that, that's one of the key factors, that and the fact that her history with, uh, with her mom, who also sat on that board, uh, and, um, and so on. You know, that's something that feel like is, uh, a little bit of help to, uh, to, uh, lean on your mom a little bit. She's smarter than you think.
That could matter to public record.
Scratch that if you like.
I agree, three, three great candidates come forward, so.
Yeah.
It was a very tough choice.
I agree, I'm glad we have candidates that are willing to do that, I'm glad that we, for council and for planning and zoning. As Mark shared with me earlier this week, it's, you just have to just beg sometimes, looking for someone, so it's good. You don't screw any of that, so.
You need me to add in there, uh, January of two thousand seventeen?
They just got the remaining term.
Okay.
Alright. That said, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approval to increase petty cash for five hundred dollars. I think, uh, Mark and Teresa probably have the most to add on this. I might read like you have the packet here, but.
Yeah, um, I had a discussion with Mark, um, as a council mill, um, we only pay bills once a month if you go to council. Every once in a while, there is a bill that comes in that needs to be paid to meet certain deadlines, and then those prepayments are also put in your packet, but we have to pay those in between. Um, those are few in between ones, they're usually only two or three if we ever. One that we always have though, and we know we have, is, um, we have to pay the postage when we send out the water and sewer bills. We, the water and sewer bills get sent out first of the month. We don't know the amount of that postage until that day because it varies from month to month due to the number of bills we send out, you know, services stop, start, those vary. And every other month, we also send a newsletter, so. Until Ron actually prints all the bills, we know how many we got to send out. She then takes them up to the post office, they calculate a postage. We come back, write a check, and then we take that right back out, up to the post office and mail the bills. What we've done in the past is, usually the mayor works out of town, so he'll come in the night before, he'll sign, basically it's a blank check because we don't know the amount of it. And then, like I said, we'll fill it out that following day, take it up there when we know it, then the final officer will sign it and gets that paid. Mark was wondering if there's a way we can go around signing a blank check, which is a very reasonable thing to do, and ask, can we use petty cash? We could, we only carry a hundred and fifty petty cash over here, I mean, we don't do a lot of cash transactions, so if we were to do that, we would just need to increase petty cash, I mean, that works for us too. The, um, postcard, when just the postcards get sent out, are about two hundred and fifty to two hundred and eighty dollars postage, depending how many we have. And I looked and every other month when we have a newsletter, it can be anywhere from four hundred to four hundred and thirty. So I think if we increase petty cash to five hundred, that would cover it every month, and that would, you know, avoid the problem with the, the check, which is probably a good practice to put in. And that would, you know, avoid the problem with the check, which is probably a good practice to put in place. But we'll be increasing petty cash, so I would need the council to approve that. If that's how you wanna go.
It's gonna make the city more efficient, two senses. The mayor is gonna have to slap down and run this and run up, and then run back, and then run back up.
Sure, yeah, exactly.
The biggest key to the whole thing, and I was actually surprised, because I'm sure it's been going on for years and years and years, that mayors have been signing blank checks for years and years and years and years.
What, in good faith?
In good faith.
The same as, the same as five hundred dollars in petty cash?
That's right.
Yeah, you're, you're chucking us with five hundred dollars in petty cash now.
But if, if, if it goes upside down, it goes upside down for five hundred dollars. It doesn't go upside down for fifty-five dollars. Until you've got to sign your name on a blank city check.
Put a little quiver in it?
That'll, that'll test your faith in Teresa. Nice lady, but.
Why not? I'm still here, I'm not in Cancun or I'm posting all this on.
There were those brochures on their desk, right?
So I, I'm gonna make a motion to approve bump in petty cash of five hundred dollars, just so we can get away from the signed blank check policy.
Second, my motion.
Alright, any questions, more discussion? I gotta, I just needed to know, so the mayor has to sign every check?
Yeah. Actually, our checks, we got a two signature system, so you know, you got some safeguard. One signature has to be the mayor or the council president, the other signature has to be either the finance officer or myself. So the mayor and the president can't sign together, and we can't sign together in the office. We always have, you know, those double checks. So two signatures is always required.
Right, but we can't conduct business without his signature.
Yep, without either his or council president, we can't, can't write a check.
So Jeremy got mad, he couldn't send out water bills. I mean, in theory, right?
Yep, in theory.
Which is a necessity for the city to do.
Well, if Jeremy and Mark get mad, yeah, you're right, in theory, yeah.
You know, this is the second time I've heard that question, and I can't remember who was the first person. But I think if, if me and Jeremy refuse to sign city checks, I think this council was well within its rights to call a special meeting and relieve us of not doing our duty.
Right.
Any, yeah. So I think that's the safeguard to me and Jeremy not signing checks, that was probably.
Maybe that'd be a question for Mr. Nelson.
Yes, Ryan. I, I guess if, if Jeremy and, and the council president refuse to sign checks, how would the council go about signing?
Couple options. One, they could be charged with malfeasance, which is refusing to do their, their job. The second thing is I think someone could bring the other man, Demus, against them, where the court would say, you need to do what your job is and go ahead and carry it out. The system that you have now is with the two checks, and by different portions of the government, everybody, I would call the executive portion and administrative portion. And before you can write a check, you have to have, if someone's gonna steal from you, you gotta have two people in on the play. And that's the exact same office, or same, same thing we do in our office. There are two, two signatures on every check. And, but yeah, Mark's got a, there, there's a way that, that you could be forced to do their, their job.
I don't think that's ever happened before.
I don't think it will.
You never know.
He's got a point, my friend.
That answered your question.
It does, thank you very much, yes, thank you.
Alright, anything else, any other questions? We got a motion, second, right?
Yes, sir.
Alright, Mark?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Alright, counter offer for lot three in Swenson addition. So last council meeting, we had an offer to purchase the five, roughly five acres around that's up there next to Central States. And memory served me, or a minute served me on that, that we said we'd take a look at that and maybe even consider a counter offer. And so at this point, on this piece of it, I think what we should discuss is, are we prepared to make a counter offer? And, and if we aren't, what kinds of things do need to happen with that land? So that it is ready to be sold, and so that we know we're getting the right price and that kind of, we're doing the right thing with it. So at that point, I'm just gonna leave it up to discussion. Any, I, actually I'm not coming up for discussion yet. First, I'm gonna say, I went to the HADC meeting right after this last council meeting and, and Teresa was there, you know, and the HADC board was there. They went through and discussed many different things. Couple different things that came up were how much a square foot that ends up being if you're at eighty-five hundred an acre around that. They started looking at what square footage costs are for the northern part of Sioux Falls and some of those kinds of things. So the other piece that was discussed that, that I guess kind of perturbed my ears on it is that driveway or that easement, I guess that's what they would say, is, is there on the east side of it. And right now, I don't believe we have any sort, we don't know what the elevation's it'd be to put that road in. We don't know how that, how that access would look. So if anybody went in there right now, put a building in, they would be taking an educated guess as to how high to put that building and where to set things, hoping that they don't run into a drainage issue when the road does go in. So, so I think there's that piece of it, and that road takes up a considerable piece of it. You maybe have the numbers, but I don't, but I've heard people toss around that it's really probably about three acres of filled, um, filled up with ground out there and so forth. So.
Yeah, I brought some boards to kind of show you guys some different things that we went through, I guess, if you wanna, if you want me to put them up there. As far as how a road would.
Forty-three feet. Forty-three, five, six. Peter, I have forty-three, five, six.
I was gonna say five thousand something.
Mitch, how many, how many gallons in an acre to stop right there?
Cube, I remember cubic foot. I wanna say it's like seven point four eight or something like that for conversion.
Probably at twenty-seven thousand.
Okay. Not the same conversion as something. Okay, so I'm gonna put this board up here, 'cause I brought several boards.
Mitch, right in front of the camera, can I maybe put you out here? Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay, so I just brought this board first, just so we all knew the kind of area we're looking at here. Every year, you're right as far as, you know, this access into this location. We need to plan this out, and we probably need to involve these people a little bit, even if we're planning up these things, people's use. I just, I wanted to show this quick because, you know, we own all this ground where the park is. And where this street comes in is kind of deadheading into this park line. So we probably will be, if this land ever comes forward, I can expand it a little, sweep around our park and also that back up to it. This is just a closer up of that same thing. Right here?
Yeah, I think yeah, in there.
So we laid out a couple options, and one, one of them being, okay, how, question I kinda have is what size block? Right now, we have roughly five acres. By the time we take off the right away on this end, this right away I have to give up, we're probably down to four and a half acres is what we have left. By the time we give up this right away, we're down to this three point eight acres. Okay? So that's really the usual way we have to work with it. When we look at access locations on these, these types of parcels, this is the sixteenth section line. So that's a good place for access. It'll serve access to this ground as well as what we do, what is done here. We have some rules as far as design standards going, we have roadways like that. One being that we don't wanna have an access point on this road for three hundred feet from this road. Okay? So that really limits, or kind of dictates what we can do with this ground. We had a couple proposals come in a while ago, where they wanted to buy this ground and do an access through here, gravel access, and maybe come quick off this road and have an access in there. And the second, we said, well, no, that, there's this three hundred foot rule, it kind of, kind of scared them off, so. What we're finding, I think, is, I think you guys would be better off getting this built, getting it into the price of the lot, and trying to get that money back out of the lot, so.
So that's the only way to access that lot? You can't access it off the highway?
There, this, this is the approach that Jeremy was kind of, this is the approach here now, and the county will dictate whether you can have another access. And typically, they're not, they won't grant another access in there. They, they have control for that. So being that this is the sixteenth line, they'll usually allow that access to continue. But they, there, if there was another access in here that was, has been there forever, they'd probably tend to allow that. But since there's no access at all, I don't see them allowing another access in there. And as a city, you know, as we take over this area, you know, growing this area, we don't want these accesses along here either. Because these are our major roadways. We wanna go in with the access on them as much as possible. Okay? So if you wanted to take, someone wanted to take a little further than that, we looked at another option to subdivide that parcel to even further down to six different lots. Okay, well, that would take is, we'd have that access point out to here, roughly that same three hundred feet. Then we'd have to have, have to have a cul-de-sac in there to serve those six lots. What happens is we end up getting more infrastructure in this area, the price of the land per square foot needs to go up to go to recoup all these costs. So in my mind, I don't want, I don't know that this makes as much sense for you guys, 'cause you gotta have real good vision of what you wanna do here. You know, kind of like the other ones, you get, you kind of have more options. You can sell that whole piece off to developer, and a developer can decide if he wants to put in four lots, or two lots, or six lots. Those are kind of the options I, I see out here. I guess one thing I wanna point out too is, you know, we don't have any sanitary sewer service out here. We have water, so we can get water out there pretty easily. But we're probably, these guys are on a holding tank. And the thing I didn't really like about this option is I didn't wanna end up with six holding tanks on here. So, even if we have one, I probably end up with one holding tank on here.
Uh, where would that road, where's that bigger picture?
Yeah.
We've got the city park south of there. We continue to, we put a road along the east side of the city park?
Well, and that's, that's why I'm only proposing you build it out to here, because it, we don't know what's gonna happen the rest of the way. But my, my instincts kind of tell me that if this land came forward, this would still serve this area, but they'd probably wanna sweep this around here and back up houses possibly to the, to the park, just so they can get good efficiency out of that infrastructure that they put in. Um, I don't, you know, with what we have planned here, I just don't know that we'll see that road run alongside that. I think the developer may, maybe might even sweep it over here, you know.
If that road continues, so, would it, would it tighten, would it be Main Street, would it be Oaks? Um, would it be?
Well, probably Oaks.
Oaks, probably, I don't think it's over.
It's gotta be main, doesn't it, main?
I think it's main.
Gotta be main.
Okay. Yeah.
Yep. So, yeah, you definitely, okay, okay.
So, I mean, without going with having a plan from these guys at all, just, I think, I think we, we know this, this makes sense going out to here. Now, the thing is, is once this ground's sold off, well, you wanna, you're gonna have a piece of street here that's unfinished, that at this point, ground does come forward, someone's gotta pay for this road. You probably wanna work the cost of that, even that future cost, either your lot price, too, just so you have something there that these guys, that you got that those costs into that lot.
So, so what you got drawn there Mitch is three hundred feet?
Yeah.
Would be a little over three hundred feet, so is it from the north side of that?
It's from the, it's three hundred feet from the center of this roadway to the center of this driveway.
Okay, Ohio is three fifty.
But like you said, it'd be graded to be the five acre lot.
Plus the cost on three hundred and fifty per road. So this option, we've been seeing them around six hundred dollars a foot. By the time you add your water and your sewer and those things in there. I went, I went back to the mountain trail project that we did and asked about with that street cost. So the total cost of just this infrastructure, we estimated three hundred and eighty thousand, roughly.
Curved, got our asphalt, water and sewer.
Yep, and if you were to put that cost, and, and then also included was this hundred and twenty-seven thousand for the, for the future road, that's in this number, this three hundred and eighty. If you take that total three hundred and eighty and put it back in this three point eight acres, it's about two dollars and thirty cents a square foot.
What, uh, what if we didn't do the, that extension? Or is that even an option?
Which, this look?
The, the.
This degree?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, I don't think you should do this, because we just don't know what this roadway's gonna do from here, so.
Well, I mean, you're, you're, you're saying we grade it, though, correct?
Yeah, you, you wanna set aside the right away.
Okay, okay, okay.
You know what grading you might do in an area, I don't know necessarily until we get, until we do a survey through there, but.
So what is the one twenty-seven cost of that?
This is, this is a future cost that I estimated for when this, when someone does come forward and
Gotcha.
maybe this ground comes forward, and now we got this piece of street that's gotta get built. A lot of times, the developer will come and not want, they, they'll ask you guys to put that piece of street in there since it's, they'll try to, you know.
For sure, I follow you now.
And the one thing too, that bumps this up higher than, than, you know, most developers have around both sides here, there is gonna be a piece here that benefits from this roadway. So I think it's worth talking to these people even, and, you know, right now, I'm showing this roadway entirely on your property, the sixty-six, sixty-six feet of right away entirely on your property. And I would start discussions with them to see if we can split that in some way. You know, maybe they can dedicate thirty-three feet since they do have benefit in property.
That's gonna be a short conversation, Mitch, 'cause that's about all it's gonna be, is do you wanna dedicate thirty-three feet, and they're gonna say, no.
Yep, and then I'd say, well, then we're gonna try to put a cost recovery against that property to recover those costs when, when you do come in the city.
My, my personal opinion is, I love the idea of doing that road, but doing that road by itself doesn't make any sense. But if you tie that onto a bigger project, where you don't have mobilization, and you get the, you get the the cost benefit of lower material prices, because you tie that onto a Nicholson, going out to Assums, and I would, I would guess that'd get substantially cheaper. And that's gonna be a bonded project anyway. It's be bonded altogether, you do it all at one time. But I, I would like to have, I would like to have that on the shelf, you know, at least. If, if we, if we greenlighted stockbills to at least do the engineering, and we wait for a day when that can be tied into another project. If some, if, if somebody calls a column, at least you have the elevation shot. You have it designed, you say, if you wanna buy it, this is the road we're gonna expect you to put in.
And I would always suggest you guys try to put that street in before, rather than going that avenue, just because then you know your costs, you know, and you're not, you know, if, if the costs go up on this road from overestimating for some reason, I mean, I just surely suggest you build it, then sell it if that's, if you can. That's how you do the lots.
I think we've done, we have these now, it's not ready to let it go to land. And if we were to, let's say we sold it, we accepted the offer last meeting, sold it. I mean, would have, would have we been able to allow them that little corner access, or would that have been a mess anyway?
Well, I think the second you let this land grow, I mean, we were, if anybody came here, we would, we would know to keep the right away at least.
Yep.
But you, you just, you kind of take the ball out of your court, you know, you put it in your court, so. But, uh, you, you just, you kind of take the ball out of your court, you know, you put it in your court, so. If you sold that off without making any improvements, you kind of, you just run the risk of, you know, are those improvements ever going to get made? And then to recoup them against these properties, um, you're going down to the road of, of an assessment or something.
I mean, does that require you to put that road in?
We, we have, we would, I would strongly suggest you do require it. Um, we've tried requiring it on some of these other offers, and it's, that number scares them off, so.
Type of roof we talking, two, two man, kind of man, is there a man?
It's a four inch asphalt mat, um, typical base section.
But, uh. If, if somebody like the Central States came in, they wouldn't put that street in, if they utilize that, if they utilize that whole lot, they just come through that entrance into the park.
Yeah, but we, this is an important connection that's going to serve the rest.
But that's what I'm saying, I mean, if we sell the whole thing.
I, I'm going to question, why, why is that, why can't it go on the other property?
It, it can, you're right, it can go on the other side, we would maintain the right away. The problem, the thing is, is we never know, we don't know when this is coming in, you know, so if this did.
If I buy that lot, if I'm a buyer, like Mark's saying, if I'm going to use that whole thing for one business.
Yep.
Or maybe two, maybe you're going to put one road in the middle and have it on both sides. I mean, what, why do we have to have that road in there, why can't it be developed just off the highway?
Well, if, if you're going to put an access in here, you, we've got to remember, we've got to get another access in here to serve the rest of this ground, and the county dictates that. The sixteenth lines are usually those key access points that serve.
Are we talking driveways or roads?
Roads.
Okay.
Yep.
So why can't I have a driveway into the property and a road over?
A driveway over here?
Yeah.
County won't let you do that. They won't let you put any type of access besides this one. Whether this is a driveway or whether this is a roadway.
We don't give up that street for the same reason, we don't want the, the Canadian build up, building of that way.
Oh, I, I, I think, I, I don't think this council would give that up, but I don't think it's out of the realm of possibilities to think that four people wouldn't sell that five acres of land and not keep that easement. The city council will determine whether that property gets sold with or without that street easement on the east side.
So you're saying by, by approving Stockwell to, to do that engineering, we know that cost, we have that, that, we have that figured out. We attach some project in the future, we set ourselves up to guarantee that that road goes in. At some point, or it gives us a lot of energy.
Well, I think, I think you do, we, you darn well guarantee you to put it in.
Yeah, I mean, if you hold the right away, you can always build the street. The question is recouping those costs, trying to recoup those. That's what most developers are doing, you know, they'll, they build, just like the Stables did, they built all their infrastructure, they put all that into their lot prices, and now, and then they mark up their lot, lot process prices accordingly. Um, I'm just suggesting you try to do the same thing.
And I, I don't think it's a situation where we need to, you know, build more money, but I also, I also don't want to see the city council sell the property, lose control over future, you know, North Main.
Yep.
Uh, you know, and, and even if you break even, you're going to have some type of structure there that's going to add to the tax base for the next forty, fifty years. You know, employee, you know, and Dean's gone, I see Theresa sitting back there though, but, you know, that land south of there, I mean, that's bare land too.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's slated for, it's slated for sports complex, but, I mean, four people on the council do whatever they want with it.
Speaking of land, are you done? That land in the south, what, year three of five on that, that alfalfa agreement, right? Am I correct? Right, right here?
Yes, we just started the first.
Three of five? Okay, and that's binding?
No, it's built in, there's an out in contract that if we want to utilize any land, we can take it back.
Good.
There's an out for.
Okay.
I'd, I'd like to see the city, at the very least, have an engineer get the elevations, get some, granted, the, the prices are only going to be what they are this year. But at least, you know, at least then if, I think we could make a better, I think we could make a better decision with what to do with it in the future.
If we put the street in?
I don't think it's a matter of if we put it, I just think it's a matter of when we put it in.
Okay.
And then, and then if, if a Mickelson project does come up, you know, that'll even pay you back, I think, I think we can, if, if a Mickelson does come up, I think we can, we can, option bid number one with it, option bid number two without it. See, you can, you know what I mean, see, see what your cost is, see if you want to do it.
Well, I think that's, I like it too, just because it, it's one less thing. If we've got, if we've got an economic development person, their feet on the ground, I'm not saying Jesse's going to be selling land in the first month or even the first year, but somebody comes up and says, hey, we want to buy it, and then we still haven't shot elevations, and we're waiting for council meetings, and we're waiting for time to approve, things like that, it's just more time, so.
I'm going to make the motion that we have Stockwell design it, whatever that is, they'll shoot the elevation, get the cost, put together.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put together a proposal for you guys to consider.
A proposal to do it, or?
Yeah, a proposal to do that, that work here, to design.
I amend my, I amend my motion to have Stockwell present a proposal to engineer, uh, whatever you want to call that street. North, North Main.
North Main.
Second.
That's three hundred feet. Three hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
It's got to get you past that first.
Yeah, I mean, we got, we'll design this as one project.
I think, I think you can leave the tail off from the niche, but.
Yeah, I mean.
That's south one seventy five or wherever it was.
Yeah.
Just, just put together a proposal of what you've got there.
Okay.
So if that's approved, that means that acres on hold again. And that's right?
Well, it's actually, it's actually Chad Vanderwold.
Yeah. And, and the, the, it goes from five acres to three point eight acres, correct?
Whatever it is.
I think we need to find out what we've got, though. I think that's where we're at.
We don't trip, we don't trip over a dollar, big old dime.
We don't, we don't know what's out there, we've got to find what we have.
Yeah, and with the design, I mean, I know I'm high still on this number, because I'm just using rough numbers, I mean, once, the designing that that dialed in, what's our due, what we expect to ask?
Where are we, you say we got water, what's the CIP on, on source?
The CIP on sewer?
Yeah.
Could be quite a lot.
Yeah.
Huh?
It's not even in our.
Not even in the radar?
Yeah, I think we have Mickelson as the next project that we got on this.
But weren't we supposed to have Central States hooked up in the next couple of years?
I don't know.
I don't.
Did you make any agreement like that, or actually go them off by a certain time?
I don't know if you read it on, so I don't actually see.
Hooked up to water?
Well, I know that, was it just water, was, I thought it was sewer?
No, it was just water and sewer, our agreement was when we get the services out there that they have to hook up, we're, we're not in early time limit to get it there.
Okay, I think right now this is just, let's, uh, let's deal with what we got on hand, and that's basically the look at a proposal.
Yep.
Hopefully by, excuse me?
Okay.
All right, any more discussion on that?
Okay.
All right. Scott?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Mark? All right, any correspondence? Right over to city engineer, okay?
Okay. Yep. Uh, starting with the pool project, uh, they've got everything mostly complete out there. Uh, we're expecting to have a final inspection, uh, we're trying to schedule it for next week. So we'll come up with a punch list of items that need to be corrected or repaired, you know, there's a couple of things, some crack tile somewhere, and a few things like that that got to get fixed up. So we'll have that inspection next week, and then, hopefully come back with final payout at the next meeting. Uh, so we do have a payout at this meeting for the work they've completed so far, which we already pack it. So we recommend approval of that payout.
Make the most to approve one hundred and forty eight thousand, two hundred and ninety five dollars to the total land side plan for pay request number three.
Second.
Discussion? I thought the project is supposed to be done right now?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Imposed.
Okay, um, Mike Frank and Trail, we do have our designing agreements approved with the DOT, we're moving forward with the heavy pet, our surveyors out there, picking up the additional survey, we can put a new alignment. And we just scheduled a meeting with Jeff Danielson for next week to sit down with him and review that alignment with him. Um, so we're moving forward with the design on that project. Uh, the floodway determination, we've got all our correspondence back from February now, so everything is approved and, uh, good to go there, so, you know, that project's pretty much complete now, everything, given everything to developers, and they've got what they need for that project. Um, the infrastructure planning, uh, we've talked last meeting, and I agree with Craig and Theresa just on, uh, discussing infrastructure planning in the southeast corner of town. So with, through those discussions, we decided to put together a couple of proposals, and we have those on the agenda tonight. We can go through those quick.
The sewer study?
Yeah, we, we got two proposals, one for updating the sewer study. Um, we got to get our arms around what we're going to do with our sanitary sewer, um, in that area of town. And with this proposal allows us to go and evaluate some different options, um, where the trunk lines are going to run through that area, what we need to do as far as our treatment options, um, kind of looking down the road as far as expanding the plant, or possibly, um, doing some other type of designs, I guess, with the plant. So that's what that proposal kind of encompasses, I don't know if there's questions specifically on it?
They're proposing to do this study for thirty thousand dollars. Um, we do have budgeted ten thousand already in this year's budget for it, so the, the plan would have to come out, we just, we'll do it.
This is going to be kind of the first step to, within our seven year frame, probably, on our sewer system, so we need to start to move ahead with this, just, uh, figure what we're going to do. I mean, water reset sewer, we're going to be getting in trouble here in seven years.
Is that where you're going, like, as far as getting close to capacity?
Seven years out.
When's the last time we did one of these?
Two thousand and seven was the last.
Okay.
This, we'll be updating the two thousand and seven study.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the agreement for the comprehensive wastewater collection study.
Second.
We're going to be looking at different, like, mechanical treatment versus ponds, everything, just.
Yeah, we actually, we'll be doing a short term analysis and a, and a longer term analysis. Um, so we'll be looking at aeration and mechanical plants and, um, seager systems and all these different things that are treatment options.
And this is a citywide study, correct?
We'll be, yes, we'll.
But I mean, you're, you're going to, you're going to capture, you're going to capture Central States, you're going to capture Assam, you're going to capture the.
Yeah.
The life of the current facility, I mean, it's all inclusive.
It's all encompassing, the, the current study you had right now is all encompassing, we don't expect much to change on the west and north side, there's not much has changed, nor since we've done, did that study, but we expect a significant change on the south side.
All right.
All right, we got a motion and second, any more discussion? Are we allowed to spend thirty thousand without bidding? Something like this?
The bid limit's going to be fifty.
What bid limit's big?
This is for professional services.
Yeah, it's professional service anyway, so it's, yeah, I guess everyone's all about that.
Second agreement is for preliminary.
All right, Scott?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yeah.
And Mark?
Yes.
Okay.
The second agreement we have is for Mickelson Road, doing preliminary design on that project. Um, through our discussions with Assam, you know, guys, there's, there's becoming a need to have an alignment established on Mickelson Road, how it meets the highway. They've thrown out a couple of different options that, that aren't really, in my mind, they're just, they're not working well for what the, the property that they have, I guess. Um, there's a lot of coordination that needs to happen through the DOT, and we feel with Mickelson Road project being on here, you got a CIP, we really need to start doing some preliminary design, so we can have some of these questions answered for these developers in this area. It actually came up even with the Kelly Point people, they've got questions on where the grades are going to be for Mickelson Road, where the road elevations are going to be. Um, so we would suggest that we start doing preliminary design on that roadway.
The tubes that you brought up, the third phase of Kelly Point, as I understand it, would, they would need to put a lift station in.
Yeah, it'd be the fourth phase of Kelly Point, yeah, right now they have to put a lift station in to serve that.
So the trouble that they would have is, what, once, once small, they, they wouldn't have a clue where they, how to tie that in.
Yeah, they got two cul-de-sacs coming out to that roadway, so, you know, where that, where we're going to build in Mickelson Road, going to be important to them for moving forward with that. Um, the lift station, we've talked to them about, hopefully they can work with Assam even, and those two can come together and hopefully build one lift station on, possibly the Assam property, but there's a lot of questions like that, that they're asking of us, and we don't have any answers for those.
Sure. And this is, so this is thirty thousand dollars to put this proposal together?
Yep.
And is this piece of it budgeted for this year?
No, there's nothing, so this would all have to be approved or come out of that general budget.
We're at ten thousand dollars budgeted?
It'd have to come out of general budget reserves, it's not in the budget.
We have ten thousand budgeted, and between these two, we're looking at sixty, right?
And again, this is preliminary design, we'll be doing a survey, um, and we'll get the general alignments of the roadway and utilities and those things. Those not include construction documents, so when you guys are ready to go forward with constructing that project, there'll be, we got to go forward with an agreement for construction documents and those types of things.
The developments that are already underway and the developments that won't get started, I don't, we have to take this plate at some point, so.
Make the motion to. Approve Stockwell engineering to proceed with civil design.
Second. I got some discussions, Jeremy, so. Yeah. This isn't a street design.
It's preliminary design, um. What that means is we're going to do a survey, we'll establish the elevations for the roadway, it's not construction documents.
Well, then, I'll just, I'll just tell you what I'm getting at, Mitch, this seems excessive. Thirty thousand dollars seems excessive to me from. Mickelson Road, Patrick, to Highway thirty eight.
Yep.
For a topple map, elevations.
Yep.
And what else do they get?
We got to coordinate with the DOT on all those access, those will, it'll be a, a number of meetings between them and us. Um, we're going to, we got culvert crossings under there that are significant, we got to design all that.
But, see, that's what I want to know, are you, are you going to design it? But, see, that's what I wanna know, are you, are you gonna design it or are you just gonna?
Yeah, it's design, it's design work. It's just simply not issuing construction.
How big a step, how big a step is it from design to plans? Is it another thirty thousand dollars or is it eight thousand dollars?
I don't know where, I had to go back to our office.
You know what I'm saying, though?
If you, if you guys want.
Because what I, what I don't wanna have and I don't wanna do thirty thousand on the front end? And then when we, when we bond it and then you guys come in at sixty thousand dollars for the engineering? Because I don't, you know what I mean, is that ninety thousand? I don't know. I don't know if the second number from you guys is gonna be sixty? Or whether the second number from you guys is gonna be twenty?
Well, I can get that information for a, for a project and we can go back and estimate what our fees would be for all those stuffs.
Yeah, because I just wanna know, I, I know it has to be done. I, I get that. I just don't want a new council, because a new council's gonna vote on thirty and then if you roll in with another.
Wait, no, you're right.
Seventy.
I can go back and estimate it, because I don't know what they are.
You'd rather answer these questions today than when the next proposal's got a bigger number on it.
Sure.
But I just wanna know all this in terms of Patrick to Highway thirty-eight.
As I read your agreement for professional services, it's a long sum not to exceed thirty thousand. It could come in at twenty-two thousand.
But on the next page, see, I read that too. This says not to exceed thirty and then on a different page it says a flat fee of thirty.
That was a concern I had, yeah.
It says two different things. Where did I read that?
It's supposed to be a long sum, I think, the other one, but it shows up probably here on, on some pages.
There's compensation there, like you said, right?
Well, it sounds like we just need to go back and clean that up and bring you guys some more information.
Six, six point one. So, I just, I'm not opposed to it Mitch, I just wanna know what the second number's gonna be. So.
I can get that information, sorry to break your jobs, but.
Jerry, can I, can I comment on this?
Yeah.
Even before, boy, you picked a good night to pick this one, maybe a good night to not have me set up there yet. This has been going on for a long time. You guys know I live on the corner of Patrick and Mickelson. And when they first did the first half, I asked these guys, I don't know if it was you or one of the guys from Stockholm, I was here at a meeting and I said, "Fellas, go past my yard, because I'm gonna be the only guy that's gonna get tore up twice." And I'm, was that you? Do you remember that conversation? I left here that night mad, because I'm gonna have my yard tore up twice. Here's another thing, I should've said while the depth, he was here. I can tell you how fast cars come screaming down that gravel road. I am shocked we haven't had somebody ran over. It's terrible. I'm a little concerned when we pave it, that it's gonna be even worse unless there's some changes made. So when, Mitch, when you talk about DOT and what they're gonna have to do, I can tell you, they go past my house, don't even hit their brakes at the stop sign. I mean, I'm shocked we haven't had somebody.
You live on that landmark or Mickelson?
I live on Patrick, right in the car of that, just kidding. Yeah, the stop sign. Yeah, they watch, they watch the stop sign.
You're right.
I got one other comment. The last time when this came up and why they did not continue on is because Stumpy wouldn't pay the assessment. So how does that factor into all this, even all this discussion? I'll guarantee you, he still does not wanna pay the assessment. So you can talk about this all you want, but unless you come up with a way to put some assessment on him.
I think that it has changed recently with, we can do a cost recovery now on that side.
Okay, that's all we'll say tonight, I'll say the rest.
And you're absolutely right, that was, that was a concern, that's why Mickelson did stop where it's at, because you couldn't assess it.
Right. Yeah, he stopped, he was here that night, he was here that night. It was not, it was not very much fun, I'll tell you that.
And, and project funds, you know, control a lot of those, the limits of where we're starting there. Now the legislation has allowed us some more avenues to be able to contract or renew those, cost recovery. Okay, Audrey, could you read the motion that we have, and it's like anyway about that?
Yeah, we have Mickelson Road, that pool, we'll shift to design extension of the road and the horn segment.
Can we just discuss until?
I'll make a substitute motion to have Mitch get, to get more cost analysis for the final project on Mickelson before we sign the agreement for professional services.
Second.
Does everybody here understand what just happened procedurally about there's a motion and a second? A substitute motion is procedural matter that takes precedence, it's non-debatable. So if his passes were done, if it fails, you're back to the first motion.
Mark?
Yep.
Mark?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Can you make sure that you clarify the language, like, long sum and not to exceed?
Yeah. Thank you. Water main extension project does an excellent amount of work. We had the contractor go out there and oversee some areas, some of the areas from the central states were, you know, takeaways as well. We had them oversee that, they've done that. Probably have a final payout on that project at the next meeting also. Force count work, we've been doing some reviews for the triple three preliminary plans. Did some work for the Sixth Street drainage, which we're gonna talk about here. And then this Lot Three concept plans. That's all I've got. Now.
Sixth Street.
Okay, Sixth Street. I have a board here. Craig and I went out there and looked at this area. You got me nervous, Mark.
Yeah, calm down about this, calm down about the agreement, Mitch.
Oh yeah, so we went out here and looked at this area. They're already know where we're at here, we're on Sixth Street between, we've got Mont and Eastern Avenue. This is Sixth Street, this is the area where we get water, kinda sitting in that, that was returns for that street. We have, we don't have storm sewer around Sixth Street anywhere, the closest storm sewer we have is down here at Fifth Street. And so for the short term, to fix the issue that we have with this water standing in this area is simply extend a storm sewer up here and put it anyway. Right now the city has a drain tile that runs up here. We don't really have an inlet there, we just got some rock that's filtering the water through there. So it probably takes a while for it to really get into that tile. And I think that just having an inlet there will help clear that out quite a bit. So in the short term, we would suggest that we extend that pipe to there. Let's see, that's good. Here's the closest one.
Can we get a rough budget number?
If you can't see it, I don't even know. Yeah, so this, this was, we roughly estimated this around forty thousand. That's if we bid it, but talking to Craig, they might, they feel pretty comfortable about doing that themselves. Or because it's under fifty thousand with the bid laws, you can hire someone without going through the bid, so you can hire someone altogether.
He hasn't got no money in the budget for this currently.
You'd have to take out a reserves again.
What's the reserve number on, do you have any idea?
Probably half a million.
Mendoza line of half, yeah.
Don't worry, I'm keeping a list of which rules exceed.
Good. And then the, the longer term fix, you know, we still have some drainage issues in this curve. I mean, none, none of this curve really drains real well through here. We do have Sixth Street in the CIP as a project, it's not in a year right now. That'd be probably the longer term fix is to, is to rebuild that street. Because we have, we have to rebuild this water main someday, that's why this project is on there, is because of the water main more than anything. But when we do that, we should consider rebuilding the street also.
Do we have, we have an even through there, north to south?
Yep, right away through here.
Is that, is that something, is there enough slope on that?
Yeah.
From sixth to fifth?
For a storm sewer?
No, to have the city guys do it? No offense to the city guys, but if we're, if we're dealing with tight numbers?
Yeah.
That storm sewer on the, the inlet on Fifth Street's about four feet old. So, I mean, we're gonna have five to six feet or not five, well, about four to five.
I mean, what, what I would suggest is, we need, we should probably stake it, because it is gonna be rel, we would want it relatively flat. We'll wanna still stay about three, four feet deep here, so we don't have this pipe heaving underneath there. We always wanna try to stay under the frost line, so it doesn't move on us. Also, this pipe needs to be sized, there's kind of a big, it's not a real big area, but it's a decent sized area that drains to it. So we wanna make sure that that's sized appropriately to handle that water. But as far as constructing it, would it?
So just out of curiosity, Craig, is, would we farm out the, farm out the inlet and you guys lay the pipe?
We could either have the inlet made, let it precast, or we could build or make it, form it ourselves and just pour it, we've done that before.
Probably depend, I mean, maybe it does depend on whether it's concrete pipe or PVC pipe.
For there, I'd just go PVC, you're not getting any traffic on it, it's not cheaper and.
Because if we do PVC, then that's, that's easier to work with. We could do some PVC inlet season that come up to the top, those are pretty easy to work with.
So if, if the, if the city staff did it, minus the labor, what do you think that project would?
I, I don't, I have no idea. Just the materials? I don't know.
Fifteen thousand? Take a labor hour?
I, I really only deal with the contractor.
How, how far is that, north to south?
About four hundred feet.
Four hundred foot, what size PVC pipe?
We don't know yet, that's what we need sized still. But I would estimate it's probably a twelve inch to an eighteen inch pipe, I would guess.
So what's four hundred foot and eighteen cost?
I don't know material cost.
You don't know material cost?
I can tell you, if the contractor installs it, it's roughly sixty dollars a foot.
We need iPads, we can Google it.
Well, contractors I know, the pipe probably costs five bucks.
Yeah, I'm just not in tune with material cost. I'm always, I'm always, we always bid it to furnish and install.
I wanna hear from, from neighbor that lives there, what her opinion is.
My concern is, I shouldn't have to deal with that standing water, the mosquitoes are horrible. I need to get people from stop driving back there.
They drive through you?
Yes, they do.
Well, I think when we do this project, I would get rid of the three curves. I would get rid of the.
They still drive through there.
Get rid of it.
They do.
Get rid of the curve. Yeah. Take the curve, you put. Yeah, this would go over it, this would be straight curved through here.
Oh, you straight curved through there, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
What are they driving back there for?
Oh, pickups, you mean it. There's one today that just thought they would put their little lawnmower tractor in there where they just dug up the, and fixed that pipe and got stuck in there.
You're talking about the fiber optic people or what?
No, no.
Neighbor.
The neighbor.
Really?
Yeah.
How much mosquito spray can we provide for forty million dollars?
No, I've lived there for, you know, eight, nine years, it's always been a problem.
But if we, if we put an inlet there, we can tie it into the Fifth Street manhole. Then it will, then just, just drive on, that's just gonna be a separate issue. It's not gonna affect the drainage.
Not be tear it up or, you know.
Well, might tear it up, but that's no different than tearing up.
I don't know, just saying.
That's no different than tearing up any other piece of city property.
That's what happened last time, they had to put that drainage in there and they drove back there and.
Then they messed up the rocks.
They messed up the whole rocks, the whole everything.
Craig, what's your timeframe? Would you guys be able to do that this summer?
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make the motion to have Craig look into the cost of having the city staff do that project with an inlet on Sixth Street tying it into the storm sewer on Fifth.
I'd like to have Stockholm's tell me what's.
In conjunction with Stockholm's.
We've got the equipment, you don't have to rent a tractor.
We'll just.
Second.
Okay, we go one block down the street, Miss Finch chime in any time. Okay, as you well know, we've had a drainage issue right here. If we run that pipe, get it going a little farther, are we gonna cause any, any issues here?
I don't foresee any issues in this area, this, this pipe right now is restricted and, you know, probably went bigger than this pipe that is currently here. So if that's an eighteen inch pipe, I'll probably extend an eighteen inch pipe along here also. You gotta remember, this water on a big event, it's still gonna go past this storm sewer, over, overland flow and go the same now that it does for there. So even though this gets extended up here, what, what you might see happening is that nuisance water, it'll tend to drain, it'll take long, it'll drain it quicker. But you shouldn't see any more of a problem hydraulically than what they experienced today.
With that being said, would you leave a small curve cutting there? Instead of going a solid curve to let that over, over ground water?
No, I'd still do, you'd still do a full curve, but you'd have an inlet in that, now you're creating a depression in the road. You should have a drain in there. But you gotta be careful that you don't end up filling this in too far that you create a hole here. Right. So we're always looking at those things.
Okay.
For designing the roadway this.
Isn't your stand by twenty, Adrian? You live right here. Right here is where that, according to your husband, the, since that has been implemented, it's been very good back there so far. Is that still been the case the last couple of months?
Between, between our yard and the apartment.
Yes.
But now with the addition of the Fifth Street section, now we have flooding in the street. Every time it rains, it's.
With the addition of that Fifth.
Of the Fifth Street.
Or Fourth Street.
Just by the city bringing that out.
No, but they don't need to clean it out, there's nothing in there. It, every, every time it rains, it floods here.
It does flood there?
Yeah, every time. This morning it was full. I mean, we had a lot of rain, but it was full. My concern is adding a whole nother block, i- is that going to make that worse? I mean, is it gonna be, and, and it's not just the street, it's up over the cementing. So my concern is adding more onto it, is that going to affect?
And then again.
My yard.
Engineering wise, we don't anticipate that, because like I said, this pipe's gonna continue to restrict it. You gotta remember, these pipes are really only, their only size can be the minor storm event. So we call it a two and a half year event or a five year event. Your big events, your hundred year events, they're still gonna come overland flow, a lot of water to go through these areas.
I thought that's what goes through my yard, with a hundred year.
No, no, there's not, there's not a hundred year storm system in the city. That's typical, it's typical to design them for a five year event. And they slowly, and then these areas are allowed to pond and then that storm sewer slowly.
Says something about a hundred year storm sewer.
Alright, so right now, we got a motion to have Craig go ahead with Stockholm's and price out what's, what it would cost to put through the supplies.
What would it cost for the city to do the job?
Right.
Yes.
So.
Is this like a week long project, Craig, can you hammer it out or?
Yeah, maybe. It could take long, it could take long to form up, get that, just to take out and do that.
Alright, so there we go.
Yep.
Alright, Scott?
Yes. Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Mark?
Yep.
And Mark.
Alright. Thank you.
Craig, I think you're off. Alright, uh, for streets, we've been doing some gravel, gravel on the ground road, getting shaped up and ready to bag water. If we don't get it done and ready by Tuesday of next week, we'll put it off till after January days. I don't wanna have them sloppy in case we get some light rain or something like that and get them worse in all shapes. So we'll, we'll wait and see what happens with my next Tuesday. Microsurfacing, June twenty-second, I have a pre-con meeting with Sue Pauls and Brandon. So we'll find out what timeframe it is for that. So, we'll find out what timeframe it is for that, it's typically middle of, end of July before they'll hear out here, so, but we'll get a date, so hopefully by, well, first meeting in July, remember, I'll have a date, I don't know what it's gonna be. Uh, Colton Road projects, uh, underway, but it's, they've been delayed up in my area, so it's been kind of a mess up there. They told me that they're hoping end of July, first part of August, they're hoping to be up in the area up in here and they're hoping by that time, things get drier so they can move ahead and keep the waste down, so. Um, Sioux Valley and Golden West have been keeping us pretty busy with locates, that's what Jess has been doing these last two weeks, he's just locating stuff for them guys. Uh, water and sewer, we did take samples back in, uh, pH looks good, it's nice and clean, we'll see what the ammonia and, uh, E. coli is hopefully by the end of the week and be ready, hopefully they'll discharge. Nah, we're still okay yet at this time. We did have a pump go down, um, ended up being a, bearing one out on another one again, so we got that taken apart and fixed, put back together, and that's up and running now too. Uh, water main loop on Colton Road, I talked to Chad with all the red leaves behind, which is fine with me, cause we're the same boat, we're having a hard time getting some stuff caught up to. He's, we're thinking now, we're gonna, uh, put it off until, uh, end of June, I think is what we're shooting for now. So, we still got plenty of time to get in there before they're working up in that area, but. Park and pool, uh, pool's up and running, it's been real busy down there, um, Mitch talked about the zero entry, been kinda working with those guys trying to keep things moving down there. Turtle Creek, uh, drainage that we're putting in the storm sewer in there, that same thing, I want it to dry up before we go in there, I don't wanna do more damage to the park than what we need to do, so. It's still, bridge is still safe and anything like that, just that'd be nice to get it in here soon as I can. And. Think that is about all I have, really, on my report, so, anybody have any questions for me?
What's the water main loop on the Colton Road, I'm sorry?
Um, up there where Pine View Circle is and, um, Fairway Lane.
Yep.
Both of them are stubbed out, so right now, Pine View Circle is actually a dead end, and water comes up from Sage Horn that just makes it to that point.
Sure.
So, we're putting that loop in so that actually water move both directions.
Oh, sure.
Fresh air.
Yeah, it's. Would it be worth subcontracting those locates out, do you need Jesse for those stuff?
I, I don't think I'd pay, I mean, I. I, I don't know, I think for us, I think it's better that we.
Okay.
I think it's just better, cleaner, so.
Do we have any way to, to, uh, keep, maybe do the traffic count on Van Mark, cause I know there's a lot of traffic that's easy to get pushed.
Yeah, actually, our speed trailer can do a traffic, uh, traffic volume or something like that on the road.
Do that?
Yeah, we'll get her out there, see what we got.
We can, we can ask this, that one who's sitting up there too.
No, I'm not so concerned, the speed doesn't bother me, it's just volume. You know, as we, as we look at volume on Mickelson. I mean, Van Mark isn't so different. And, uh.
Yeah, and Van Mark's really picked up now with the.
It's a tough shape. You can't hardly get it shaped up to bag water.
Yeah.
That's what it appears like.
I gotta, I thought pretty good today, we got a little bit of rain, so I got up there and got to clear it out.
Probably gonna want a detour traffic, I don't know.
Yeah, there's a lot of detour traffic on there, and that's my, so my, that's my question. If we, if we did a traffic count now on Colton Road, we could, we could start to, um, establish some history. And then when the Colton Road project is done, do those counts again on Colton Road project as long as we'd have, you know, three, four different timelines to look at. To see if it goes down when it's done, and, you know, as we look at improvements on that road, yeah, do that some history.
Yep, we'll get that, we're starting, so.
Quick little history lesson, where do we leave off of the cameras in the park again, sorry?
Nah.
Kinda kill the crowd.
It takes you down, it takes you down.
That's right, we're gonna see what happens there, okay. I was at Menards, I gotta. Um, one of the thing, um, um, well, Jeremy and I received calls, uh, in regards to six oh one seven, six oh seven Crestman Trail, uh, Jeff and Katie Peterson. Um, the, the development, I'm sorry, what, I can't remember what the developers, but.
I met with, yep, I met with, um, Paul Clark here last week or just before he called me last meeting or something like that. Um, we discussed it, he's gonna get a letter sent out to the contractor and let him know that they gotta take care of that drainage, um, so we, he. Now, should have something sent out by now, I guess.
I talked again with him tonight, he's following up on it.
Would, would be on the line if I asked to see that letter, I mean, could I, could I get a, just a draft of that letter, email it to me or whatever, I just kinda like to know, you know, what verbiage, um, is being used and stuff like that and, and, uh, he'll be confidential, but, uh, you know.
I talked to Jesse again this afternoon, I went out there after he called and, uh, he was home, so I walked back there and looked at it and see what he's looking at. It just looks like, it looks to me like there was a drainage ditch. For the end, because the development was being done on the other side of it, on the west side, and now the development is there, I think it's just more of a, to me, it looks more like reality setting in that.
That's exactly what it's.
Are far than over than what.
That's something that I would like to change in their design, uh, or whatever, for these developments, um, instead of having them stop everything on the line, I'd make, I'd like to see them get pushed back a little further. Sure. The road and curb and everything like that, so that way, like for them, for example, they can't even back out of the driveway without getting the, the, off the road. So, I'd like to see them, so there's some things I kinda visited Teresa while you were last week and, sure, that we.
But for that development, what we're talking about, where Mike Burley's putting up those four plexes of the Mickelson, uh, the property owners to the east have kinda complained that. You know, he bought the property, it looked like there was a drainage ditch in there, but in reality, there is, there isn't a drainage area there, there's no drainage, you have no drainage ditch. But now that it's starting to be developed, and Mike Burley, what was there, you know, he's filling in, so, you know, he's concerned about the, there may be issues there. At this point, you know, I talked with Craig and Paul, no water's coming up onto his property, so, you know. The four plexes aren't causing any water issues on his property, he's just, I think, concerned about future problems. There is some standing water on where the four plexes, because they're doing construction there, they're digging footings, they're having dirt piles or whatnot. But in some, in essence, when he gets done with his buildings, he does have to grade it to the drainage plan of the developer, so it does need to drain, which. That'll come once he grades his land and he gets the building up and whatnot.
I was gonna say, I remember the drainage, being an issue, when we approved that on plan, it's only, and there is a drainage plan there, so as long as that's bad.
Looked at it, and there, there's a plan for the drainage and, and it will all work once it gets graded right, it's just that he's in construction now and, you know, it's not graded that way, so. You know, I, I told Paul Clark, if there does become a problem, if he does start to push the water onto the neighboring property, then we can address that, he'll have to, have to take some measures into place to, you know, control that, but. At this point, you know, it's not pushing any water on, I think he's just, I think the property owner's just concerned about the future, which hopefully, once all said and done with the construction, the drainage will work properly and there won't be any issue there, so. I tell Paul to keep an eye on it too, get the letter out and keep an eye on it.
And I'm just gonna let this briefly, real quick, like, that, that, it was a new neighbor that's moved in a week ago, and I think it's six oh five, isn't it, six oh five Crestman nine.
Okay, I, I was thinking on the end of Crestman, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah.
Well, you know. Say, you're talking about the pipe.
I thought that's.
Right now, right now, Jeff's, Jeff's problem is minute compared to the, to the one to the, to the north. Um, because, you know, it rains and it goes east, and that's it, and it sits there, right now, there's about a pool of water sitting there, and, and, and in the, in the newsletter, you know, it reads. Property owners are responsible for maintaining some of the right of way that busts to the property, including the right of way and the boulevards. Um, you know, so I, I'm just, and I was out talking, trying to catch Jeff, and I caught the gentleman, I'm sorry, I can't remember his name. Huh? Eddie? Whoever it is, I, it doesn't matter, yes. Um, you know, and, and, and I, and I just, you know, I don't see any way that he can maintain the, the grass or the vegetation there.
That, north of him, that isn't city right of way, it, that is owned by Crestman.
It's owned by Crestman.
They have not flooded that out, it's still Crestman's property, so Crestman is responsible for maintaining that.
Okay, and if there's a foot, too much water there, I mean, do they have, I mean, do they have the, the right to simply, okay, well, we're taking the lawnmower up and we gotta go and, you know, get this part, but we've got a slot. You know, five foot wide and two feet deep, we're just gonna let it go, I mean, do we?
They own, they're responsible for going to the property line, that, that isn't right of way to the north of them, that is owned by Crestman, between their property line and the street.
I'm talking to Crestman.
If we got an issue with water center on Crestman's property, so we can address that with Crestman.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be, it'd be Crestman's issue.
We sent the letters to pass that.
I wanna be nice to Crestman, but, 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 uh, yeah, I mean, cause it, it, I don't care if you look on the north side, uh, but, yeah, yeah, there's, it was, uh. Ron and Mitch, the mosquito pool, that, that's exactly what it is, so, well, you can tell it's a wet year, isn't it? It's like raining for the last hour and a half now, at least. Alright, sorry, thank you.
Alright, anything else for Craig? Okay, thank you. Yep.
Have you had a street sweeper on, uh, Sixth Street in Oconomia?
Jess is getting it taken up there, I told you, take it out once a week, so, we've got about five or six spots.
Alright, cause you know when, when I'm gonna go.
About thirteen if one.
Alright, thank you.
I'll go. My name's Porter.
Okay, in your report, you'll see, um, what our, um, month end is for April, so these are the, um, receipts that we received, um, I highlighted some of them at the top. Things that are more unusual or higher in, in, um, income, just so you're aware. There is the, um, cash balances that we had as of April thirtieth on here. Um, also, um, there are a few key things to note below, um, two of them being, one of them, I need to know if, um, any of you will be going to the elected officials workshop. Is on July twentieth, um, in Pier, and we have to go there by July sixth, so I.
Mark me down.
Okay, I just need to know if you're going or not, so.
Mark me down as well.
Okay, anyone else? You still have to go till July sixth.
Okay, I haven't gone since you went five, six years ago.
He said he was gonna give me a ride, so.
Purple with Nelson.
One day event?
The twentieth.
On July.
Now, wait a second, last time we did this, would we go up on, uh.
He's the one that told me I should go.
We got the green light to go up on Tuesday night, overnight, or is it just a one A driving up?
House will prove that.
Last time, that's what we did. They're gonna shut us down, aren't they?
I don't think the two of you need a room then. Just saying.
We expect a four.
No, they want two rooms, huh?
Oh, geez.
I don't think either one of them need a room. But I, I hope you two, uh, hope you two enjoy yourselves.
So, it's a one day event?
Yes, it is.
You're gonna have to wake up at five o'clock in the morning.
Pier's not that far away.
Thirty hunths seasons open at that time?
Several. Okay, and, um, just to let you know, we do have the audit, um, happening in about two weeks, and so during the time of the next council meeting, we'll be in the middle of the audit, just so you're aware. Um, I also already included the calendar events for you so that you know what's coming up. Um, one to note is there is a budget training that will, that Teresa will talk about, um, that she and I will both be at in July on the fourteenth. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
In the past, have we typically gotten rooms for one day events?
One day events, if they're in Sioux Falls or closer, we haven't, Pier, we have in the past.
The night before, the night of?
The night before, so, cause say it's starting at nine o'clock, eight o'clock.
Do you need a motion for that?
If you're gonna.
I'm gonna make a motion that if, in the event, that anybody intend the elected official workshop in Pier to extend a room to them the night prior to the event.
Boy, can it, I don't know about you, but I would make it a one room.
No, no, you.
Double bed, that they're.
No, 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 each get your own room.
That's why.
No, is that illegal? Ordinance against that.
Second. Any more discussion?
No.
Paul, favor?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't wake up at four o'clock in the morning like you do. Craig, you're burning.
Alright, anything else for Roger?
Other questions?
I have a question.
Yep.
How are you enjoying your job so far?
I like it.
Good.
It's going good?
Good.
Have any desire to change offices?
What do we say?
So, is there any desire to change offices?
Um, I like to go in the very back. Well, thanks to you. So, I like my bunker very well, thank you.
It's got a window.
It has a window to a window. And a door, I can shut it.
Alright, thank you. Teresa?
Um, just a few items on mine, pick it quick, uh, Brian Chumaker, he, as you know, wasn't at this meeting, he couldn't make it, but he will be at the next meeting, I'll put him on the agenda for that, for the fire department update. Um, HADC, they are continuing with doing the housing study update, they've been working with the Chamber on ribbon, ribbon cuttings and attending those, they're also working with them. As far as, uh, they're bringing an article to them for their upcoming newsletter, for the Chamber newsletter, and they are working with them to update the new website that the Chamber's putting out. They're also on their own, Zorak is kinda doing a lot of this, is setting up a Facebook page for the HADC, so hopefully get some more information out there for the HADC through Facebook and through the new website. Um. On your, uh, in your packet, there was an invitation from Makita and Lakita. Uh, extended that invitation to the HADC board and the PNC board, we talked about this, um, a couple of times, um, during the previous council meetings, but basically. Lakita and Makita are holding, um, community meetings, cause they're gonna be doing a strategic plan, they want input from the communities that they serve as to what we want them to do, what we want them to focus on. The closest one meeting coming up is gonna be June twenty third in Crook, so, you know, if he can attend it, I'm sure they greatly appreciate it and definitely will welcome our input from Hartford. I do plan on attending it and hopefully we'll have some representatives from HADC and the PNC as well, so I wanted to make sure you guys note that on the calendars. Um, grants, I put in there that I submitted a couple of grants for our transit system and one for the, um, um, a play feature for the new pool. I, at this time, when I did my report, didn't hear back on any of them, but just two days ago, I heard back from Sioux Valley Energy, we got a six hundred dollar grant for the transit system, so. That will be a help, it kinda covers some of the city's portion, uh, funding that system. There is an updated contact list in your packets for you, and if any information is incorrect for any of you, just let me know so we can have the most current information. And planning the zoning, at their last meeting last week, they did discuss, um, inspections on accessory buildings and the fencing. They did not make any decisions or don't have any recommendations yet for you, they kinda talked about some different options, they wanted me to gather some more information and, and from like what other towns do, and they're gonna plan on talking about it some more at the upcoming meeting.
Yeah, I would, we're gonna look at Mitchell, Brandon, what the DOT you require.
Yep, so I got all that information for them.
I will extend an invitation to anybody on the council to come to a PNC meeting. Yeah, that, that door is always open.
Now that you're no longer on.
Yeah, of course. They wanted to get to share that, honestly, they're like, get out of here, but hey, make sure it's on the council. Don't make it.
So, so, next Tuesday, they will be talking about, you know, those parts of the proposal and ordinance again. I did talk with Jesse Posner, our new Chamber knee, the director, he is coming to town actually this weekend for a wedding, as we kinda alluded to during our interview. He is going to be in Hartford, um, on Friday, he flies into Minneapolis on Friday, he's gonna fly down here, so I'm gonna meet with him, he's gonna stop by City Hall, just so we can kinda meet in person, maybe make a. He's gonna stop by City Hall, just so we can kind of meet him person, maybe I can show him around a little bit and just kind of touch base before, you know, when he actually comes the very first day. So, he'll plan on being here about twelve o'clock, be around, and wanna meet him, you know, you certainly can. I plan to show him around City Hall, maybe I'll show him around the city a little bit if his schedule allows.
What day is that?
This Friday. Between twelve and twelve-thirty, thought he'd probably be around, so. I said, you know, I'm gonna get this, so I just stopped him, and I'll be here, so, so just so you guys know that. He, I did invite him to Jamboree Day, since he came back this weekend. His schedule really doesn't allow him to come back next weekend, especially, you know, trying to wrap up his current job position and then moving, everything that he, he thanks for the invitation. Hope this doesn't reflect badly, but he probably skipped it this time. Definitely be here next year, he said though, so.
Can we do a life-size cutout of him that we can carry around?
Should I take a picture of him?
When some guys like a boy.
It was Jesse. So...
Like a flat Stanley kind of thing.
And the last thing I just want to touch base with the council is, with the pool coming close to completion, are we thinking about doing something for a ribbon cutting, a grand opening, whatnot? Talked it, yeah, you know, can't be a little bit, and I think they kind of like to do something. We should probably do something to that, so, I don't know, did you guys, you guys met tonight? Did you guys discuss anything about it?
We were gonna get that part.
Oh, you just, like, you can't attack your own mind.
Candy, sorry, do you guys want to do something together, or do you want to do your own thing, or?
We can certainly do something together, we didn't know if you guys were doing, we just wanted to touch base and find out.
I'll touch base with you guys.
It was on our mind, and we didn't know if you guys had anything planned or what, like, who even likely... Who typically does, is it typically the city, typically the committees? Yeah, I was, because I was unclear about that too, was that all on us or you guys, or I wasn't sure.
We haven't really done any with it, maybe.
You want to do a ribbon cutting, Chamber's ribbon cutting committee, or maybe through the Chamber just like you.
We want to, we want to help them with some of the council could be present also, you know.
You know, so it's, we don't really have an example of anything that's recent that's like this, right?
Where the city's...
Where the city project, right?
Yeah, I like that the Chamber does businesses. Done publicly.
I like how the Chamber does their city, their ribbon cutting and all of that. I don't, I don't want to put any expense on them for a city project, so, you know, I don't want to be that...
When we...
Throw us a ribbon cutting.
When we started grading at the sports complex, we did kind of a little ribbon cutting. It's basically what the Chamber does, you know, bring out the ribbon, have the big scissor. Just, you know, thank everybody for coming, you know, say a few words about the project, cut the ribbon, take a picture, and...
Would it be possible...
We did not have like any food or anything like that.
Sure, would it be possible to do, uh, to do a press release and maybe invite some of our favorite reporters to the event, to get some positive, some positive press?
Sure, I know some people in the press now.
Hey, I mean, at least to extend the... Maybe a year ago. At least to extend. I mean, at least to extend the invitation.
Oh, sure.
Chew some text out right now, Tony. I know you got him in there.
No, but, so I think we should probably settle on when we want to do something, for sure. You know, a day and a timeframe, and then, yeah, we can get the news out and do some invites or what. Do we want to wait for opening it until we, you know, do this? Because, you know, if they're done by fifteen...
Is it gonna actually open on the fifteenth?
Right, it's on the counter, it's supposed to be done.
It's on track, we gotta do our...
Do something, the Asper Jamboree Day is on Saturday, the seventeenth, are you gonna, like, kids begin it before we do this? You know, like, wait.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, yeah.
Yeah, ribbon cutting's after the fact all the time.
And so, I'm going and playing it and just making...
Would it work to do it some, I know we're kind of full, but on J, sometime on Jamboree Day's weekend? Since we have kind of a baby crowd, would it work to do it?
That makes a lot of sense.
I agree, there'd be a lot of...
Thursday night, Thursday night, we're gonna movie and stuff.
You're right, Thursday nights are doing a movie in the park, so maybe that might be a good option.
Can we leave this up?
What are the late-time pool hours?
Can we leave this up to city staff, the swimming pool committee, the Chamber? And with the, with the recommendation that whatever cost is incurred, that the city, the city pick up the cost on whatever the ribbon cutting, open house is.
You have to exceed $500, or?
You know what?
We have to, we have to cap for that, huh? Just sign and play the check and we'll make sure of it.
You know what, if it, if it costs $1,500 on what cost that pool was, it might be a bit, don't matter the meanwhile.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so you guys, I just, so we're thinking evening thing probably, so that most people could...
I'd say do it in the evening.
I would think so, too, that's kind of...
I was thinking if the pool are this sweet eight or whatever, it'd be kind of nice to do it kind of towards the beginning and then cut it and then have a... Take the clock or something, or whatever, yeah, and cut it and then open it up for view. So, on that Saturday and Jamboree Days?
I'll give you a...
Oh, Thursday, Thursday, Thursday night.
So, John, you got the pad, you got the pad, you got the...
The sixteenth.
Okay, yeah, we can coordinate that one.
Do you need a motion for that, Teresa, or can you just do a consensus of council?
That's the council, that's your guys.
Six thirty.
So, we would want to do the pool like it's... Can I please leave the pool open for a half hour, it's gonna be closed? Then can we have the pool open for that half hour that it's closed? You know, you can see your thing, it opens at six? You know, so that we cut it and then kids... We're not like, oh, no, wait thirty minutes, nothing can get in.
Oh, yeah, no, I... We'll just make sure we have...
You gotta make sure that there's guards there.
Yeah, we'll just have to coordinate with them and make sure there's staff there.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, that's, uh...
Do you have some other, do you still have some other things on that? About your training? Can we, can we... Candy, is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay. You guys are good with that?
Yeah, we're, Teresa, yeah, I'll just touch base with you for the specifics and all that, if you have anything else.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, yeah, we'll have to...
All right.
Okay.
Thanks, ladies. Thank you.
Um, yeah, and the other couple things that I have under my port, I want to talk to the council about possibly giving me leeway to keep taking applications for the pool and hire somebody if somebody comes along. We, you know, had difficulty getting enough applications this year, we had to actually advertise twice. We finally got our eight guards, which we consider minimum for covering all the shifts hired. We just, though, this last week had one of those guards quit on us, so now we're down to seven. Amy has indicated that two of the guards we hired, they're in fall, they're in camps, they're in soccer and can work very limited hours, probably just one day a week between them. So, they can't be utilized lots, that puts a lot of hour pressure on the remaining guards. So, you know, I was wondering if the council would give me leeway to advertise, to accept applications, and if that good applicant comes along to go ahead and hire them. You know, versus, you know, say one comes in tomorrow, I'd have to wait another two weeks for a council meeting, then we probably have to wait a week for all their paperwork and their drug testing to come back. You know, it'd be three weeks before we can actually utilize somebody.
I can't imagine trying to run a business with those restrictions.
Yeah, no, no, exactly right, I mean, it's just...
Maybe they'll find out down...
Do we...
It's ridiculous.
Oh, yeah, find something else, easy.
Do we, do we advertise, or do we just open the application process? Do you, do you want to, it's easy to make a motion to just accept applications as long as the pool's open. But do you advertise as long as the pool's open? Do you advertise two weeks at a time? Do you advertise a month at a time?
Yeah, I don't think...
Do you hand something up at the swimming pool that says, if you're interested?
Yeah, I guess, I don't know how many high schools like that are going to...
That's where the life nerves are going.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that...
And we're paying the same as Wild Water West now, which, you know...
That's a plus.
I'm gonna make a motion that we advertise and accept applications as long as the pool's open.
Second.
Are you gonna add anything in there to allow Teresa to make the decision and hire without coming back to the council?
And I'd stay within our guidelines of our discretion.
Yeah, and to, and to grant the city administrator to hire at her will.
It's not like we're gonna exceed, we're not gonna exceed the budget amount, I mean, there's only so many hours that those kids can work.
Well, that's it, the budget...
So, if you have a dozen kids to fit.
Exactly, it don't matter if we hire fifteen, there's only so many hours.
Yeah, cool, twenty kids, if you're only using eight for the hours required, then that's what we do.
Yeah.
It's more like a real business, make sure you staff it.
Right.
Okay, so your motion is...
Exactly.
Exactly.
It's open, it's open applications and have advertising while the pool is open and to give the city administrator full...
Hiring discretion.
All right, you still good with that, right, Mark? Scott?
Yes. Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Mark?
Yeah, I'm Mark.
Okay, and then the last thing I got, Audra alluded to it in your packet, there's a budget training session coming up. It's put on by the Department of Legislative Audit. It's a one-day thing, it's only a part day, actually, you can have a full day, just here in Sioux Falls, we won't need a room. So, I would like both me and Audra to attend this. It goes over just, you know, how you budget for municipality, what you can do with budgets, how you do appropriations, supplemental appropriations. I think that'll be good information for Audra to get more familiar with a municipal budget. I'd also like to attend too. Department of Legislative Audit has a format for a budget that they recommend using. We haven't used it in the past, we've gone by what we've always done, as long as you've got the same criteria, that's okay. But our new auditors would like us to change to the state format, so I'd like to get kind of familiar with that. And, because I think they're gonna be making us change, so, so I'd like us both to attend that day, if possible.
I'll make the motion to send Audra and Teresa to the legislative budget meeting in Sioux Falls.
Second. Any questions? Sure. Call in favors?
Aye.
And then both?
I will say, this is gonna be the opportune time to change the budget format because there's only gonna be two old dogs that...
Yeah, right, no, what's supposed to look like? Change it, we'll do it now.
What it had would look like? So, I may resist just because.
Remember, you made the motion.
Press on with vigor.
You made the motion to set it there.
And that is all I have.
Anything we need to go into executive session for?
I'm making a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Those of you who have not gotten a picture for the website, stay with me.
With you and Travis.
And Travis.
Gotta go.
No, you cut out last time, don't you dare.
I'll send you one.
I don't have a picture.
No, 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 no.
Just got some dough.
Well, you guys have good...
Great. We got my two, uh...
Sure, we're ready, yeah, I just... Usually a white wall. Everybody does, so don't worry about it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.